Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Alloca. I'm Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I'd like to acknowledge the committee members present with us this evening. Uh, when you hear your name, please say aye or point out if we can't hear someone. Uh, Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Mr. Airy? Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. Fotis? Ms. German? Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Pirlo?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you all. Um, tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from the Department of Wreckin Parks, the Office of Budget and Finance, Property Management, and Baltimore County Public Library. After each presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions of the presenters. I want to note that while there may be community members in attendance on tonight's meeting, this meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement budget program. Um, now I'd like to start with the first presentation from the Department of Wreckin Parks. I'd like to invite Mr. Bob Smith from the Department of Wreckin Parks to begin his presentation.
Good evening, Chairwoman Hafford and members of the Planning Board. I'm Bob Smith. I'm the Acting Director for the Department of Recreation and Parks. I'm pleased to offer you a presentation on the Department of Recreation Parks' proposed fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. Uh, next slide, please.
Okay.
Hey, yeah. All right. I'll talk to you.
All right, thank you. Oh, my goodness.
The department's capital budget is organized into seven project categories through which revenue is allocated to fund a wide range of capital projects as displayed in this slide. As an example, the Underway Middle River Recreation Activity Center project is funded out of Project Three-O-Seven, Community and Neighborhood Park Development, while the Sports Court Renovation Program is funded within Project Three-O-One, Recreation Facility Renovations. More details on project categories P three-O-One through P seven fifty-five is included later in this presentation. P one-O-six is a special project category which provides funding support to the nonprofit conservation organization Neighbor Space of Baltimore County, which acquires and develops small pocket parks in urbanized communities. Next slide, please. The Capital Budget Supporting Detail Booklet for Fiscal Year 2023 displays proposed funding amounts for out years, including fiscal year 2024. The amounts proposed for the FY twenty twenty-four Parks Preservation and Greenways Capital Budget, as displayed above, is twenty-two million nine hundred and fifty thousand. This amount is subject to change based upon multiple factors such as revised state funding amounts that will not be known until late in the state's legislative session, and the amount of any tier funding that may be added to supplement the proposed funding. It is important to note that capital funding typically carries over year to year, which reflects the fact that major capital projects may take several years to complete. Next slide. The Supporting Detail Booklet likewise displays the anticipated revenue sources for the proposed FY twenty twenty-four budget. Types of revenue sources range from county sources such as general funds and bonds to outside sources such as federal, state, and Maryland program open space funding to special sources such as local open space waiver fees, donations, and other. A number of the listed revenue sources are relying upon the receipt of associated funds. For instance, revenue listed under donations does not become real unless donations are indeed forthcoming. Next slide. Program Open Space or POS has been an invaluable capital budget revenue source, helping to fund a variety of park acquisition, development, and enhancement projects even when county funding was scarce. The chart on the left shows the county POS allocations in two-year periods from fiscal years twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. As can be seen, the amount of POS funding has increased over the years. The chart on the right shows the percentage of the overall Recreation and Parks Capital Budget that POS comprised over the same time period. As you can see, the proportion grew to more than fifty percent in fiscal years twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Since that time, the percentage has dropped despite the amount of POS funding significantly increasing. That trend is due to a stronger investment of county funding into the Recreation and Parks Capital Budget over the past four years. The capital funding has allowed Recreation and Parks, in cooperation with Baltimore County Property Management, to again construct new parks and enhance existing parks and recreation sites. The stronger county investment has allowed critical park and recreation facility renovation programs to resume. Next slide, please. Project Category Three-O-One is the primary source for park and recreation facility renovations and capital-funded maintenance. A strong county investment in this project category is essential as the previously mentioned program open space funds are intended to be expended on park acquisition, development, and enhancement with rules that greatly limit the use of the POS funding for facility renovations and refurbishment. A total of one point one million is presently allocated to this program for FY twenty twenty-four. Next slide. P three-O-One is used for a broad range of park and recreation facility renovation enhancement programs and needs. Over two million in P three-O-One funding has been expended or budgeted to projects since the start of FY twenty twenty-three. Some examples of work funded under Project Three-O-One so far in FY twenty twenty-three include work in progress or in the planning stage include renovations to the Hailthorpe Community Center, indoor soccer field renovations at the North Point Government Center, indoor pickleball court striping at Sukup Arena, retaining wall renovations at Colgate Park, and sports court renovations at Seven Parks and School Recreation Centers. Next slide, please. The renovation program for the two hundred-plus multipurpose and tennis courts for which the Department of Recreation and Parks is responsible, including those at elementary school recreation centers, is an example of an essential facility renovation and refurbishment program. More than thirty courts have been renovated since the start of twenty nineteen. Many courts recently renovated or presently being renovated have pickleball court striping added to help meet the new demand for that sport. Next slide. Project Category Three-O-Two provides the majority of capital funding for the construction and renovation of athletic fields, ball diamonds, and associated lighting systems. A total of one point four five million is presently allocated to this program. Next slide. Project Three-O-Two Athletic Field Construction and Renovation funds an assortment of programs and projects associated associated with ball diamonds and athletic fields as well as related infrastructure. Like P three-O-One, this capital project category funds a number of critical renovation and maintenance programs, including ball diamond de-lipping, the athletic field and ball diamond rebuild program, backstop safety fence and player bench renovation program. Another program funded on this project category is synthetic turf field surface replacements with field surface replacements being completed approximately every ten years. A newer P three-O-Two program is the effort to retrofit existing lighting systems to more energy-efficient LED technology that creates better lighting concentration and uniformity. The first such project at the Fields and Diamonds at Hereford Middle School is underway. Next slide, please. Project Category P three-O-One provides funding for most of the Department of Recreation and Parks' largest-scale development enhancement projects. Despite P three-O-seven's name, it is used for development enhancement at all types of parks and occasionally at school recreation centers. A total of twelve point four five million is presently allocated to this program for FY twenty twenty-four. This project category is the most common place where a state aid secured at the legislators utilized. The next series of slides shows a number of recently completed and underway P three-O-seven projects. Please bear in mind that these renderings are conceptual and the end product may be slightly different. Uh, the first on the long list of new park development enhancement projects was largely completed in twenty twenty-two as we celebrated the ribbon cutting of the Ravens Playground at Northwest Regional Park. Uh, this one point three million first-of-its-kind destination playground project was supported by a Baltimore Ravens donation of five hundred thousand as well as three hundred thousand in Maryland program open space funding. Two picnic pavilions will be constructed near the facility, providing opportunities for rentals and parties and gatherings or for use when not reserved. Uh, next slide. And you can see some of the photos from the October ribbon cutting, uh, that we had at that site. Next slide. Church Lane Park, this new four-acre neighborhood park at three hundred Church Lane in Pikeville will feature paved walking paths, including environmental education loop, a natural playground area, picnic tables and seating, a pollinator garden, rain garden, and pedestrian access bicycle racks, and a small parking lot. The most recent construction schedule estimates that work will begin this September and be completed in spring of twenty twenty-four. Gwinnett Park in the Woodlong community of Western Baltimore County has a rich heritage being situated in a park which was once a segregated amusement park. The park has long been a popular picnic site. Its greenery and views of the Gwynne Falls and its associated dam make it one of the county's most attractive landscapes. Design of park enhancements is expected to be completed by mid twenty twenty-three with construction to begin early twenty twenty-four. Among the proposed park enhancements are parking expansion, replacement picnic pavilion, additional picnic pavilion, significant playground expansion, and an entrance and landscaping improvements. Next slide. The Hazelwood Skate Park, uh, Hazelwood Skate Park will become the East County counterpart to the, uh, very popular Lansdowne-based Sandy Hill Skate Park, affectionately known by the skateboarding community as the Downer. Uh, with a budget of just over three point two million, the project is being designed by Pillar Design Studios, a world leader in skatepark design. The facility will feature two concrete bowls, numerous connected features varying for design for varying skill levels, parking, seating, and extensive integrated landscaping. The most recent, the most recent schedule estimates that the construction will begin in August of twenty twenty-three and be complete in April of twenty twenty-four. Next slide. Recreation Activity Centers are racks are the successors to what were previously called the Police Athletic League Recreation Centers. The rack will be constructed on, this rack will be constructed on Glenmar Elementary School Recreation Center campus in Middle River. It's one of the two new facilities that will both serve young programs and activities and and will be, uh, and general recreation community activities as well. Each of the racks will feature a large gymnasium with integrated stage, numerous activity rooms, office space, kitchen, restrooms, and storage. Construction of the Middle River Site, which has an aviation theme in celebration of the community's history, is presently underway and is expected to be completed in spring or summer of twenty twenty-four. Next slide. The second of the rack projects present underway is the Rosedale Rack to be constructed on the campus of the McCormick Elementary School Recreation Center. The Rosedale Rack will feature an e-gaming theme and will include dedicated e-gaming room. Construction is scheduled to begin March twenty twenty-three and expected to be completed in spring or, spring or summer of twenty twenty-four. Next slide. Sparrow Point Park Design and Construction Project will take place on a twenty-two-acre waterfront parcel donated to the county by Trade Point Atlantic. The site, which has undergone extensive environmental reviews and approvals, will be transferred transformed from a former industrial site into a safe, quality public park with indoor, outdoor, and waterfront recreation amenities. Sparrow Point Park will feature a sixteen thousand square foot community center with double-court gymnasium, two recreation activity rooms, concession room with outdoor access window. Outdoor facilities will include a synthetic turf athletic field with LED lighting, ten thousand square foot ultra, ultra-accessible playground, accessible fishing pier and kayak launch, scenic walking path, and a picnic plaza. The park and its center will pay homage to the area's industrial maritime heritage with historical displays in the center's lobby, an outdoor LED illuminated skyline etching, and other features that recognize the past uses of the peninsula. The present schedule for the construction phase of the project is the start sometime in the fall of twenty twenty-three and completion in late twenty twenty-four. Next slide. There are many other P three-O-seven funded projects underway in the planning and design phase or budgeted but not yet initiated. Then this, uh, the slide displayed is a partial list of the key projects. P three-O-seven also funds the agency's local park comprehensive enhancement program, which is intended to refurbish and at times reinvent existing older neighborhood and community parks. Individual projects such as those listed for Cox's Point and Diamond Ridge Park are often funded through that rela- relatively recently initiated capital program. Next slide. Project Category Three-O-Nine provides funding for trail and path renovations and construction. The Department of Public Works and Transportation has a similar capital program, though theirs mostly focuses on sidewalks and on-road pedestrian bicycle access enhancements, while Recreation and Parks is P three-O-nine predominantly funds park-based trails and path networks. A total of six hundred and twenty-five thousand is presently allocated to this program for FY twenty twenty-four. Next slide. A number of projects funded out of P three-O-nine are in the designer planning stage at present. The lower-left photos Milford Mill Trail at Villanova Park, for which renovation design is nearing completion. Design is also underway for extension of the North Point Trail, which will connect Fort Howard Veterans Park with North Point State Park's Todd House. The top two photos and map image on the right are associated with the Sixth Bridge Trail in Towson. Feasibility study focusing on potential trail enhancements, including bridge replacement leads is replacement needs is presently underway. Next slide. P six-O-three is entirely dedicated to the park acquisition program. Specific projects are not listed until they are completed, so as to avoid potential land speculation and competition for desired properties. A total of seven point one million is presently allocated to this program for FY twenty twenty-four. Next slide. The park program, the park acquisition program has been significantly revamped under County Executive Osheski and his administration, both in terms of number of sites acquired and the quality of the sites. The fifteen properties acquired in calendar years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two is nearly double the quantity acquired in the prior four calendar years. Emphasis has been placed upon acquiring properties that will make functional park and recreation sites with increased equity being a key consideration. Next slide. This slide shows six sites that are expected to serve as neighborhood and community parks, ranging from the one-acre North Point Old Methodist Meeting House property, which features a battle of North Point-related monument, to the twenty-four point five acre Villa Maria property acquisition, which preserved an existing recreation site long utilized by the Lutherville Timonium Recreation Council under a license agreement. Next slide. The four properties displayed on this slide show the wide range of purposes for which a property may be acquired for park and recreation purposes. Sixty-one-plus acre Gwynbrook property acquisition Owens Mills provides a site large enough to support a large-scale recreation facility such as a sports complex. The Worthington Road acquisitions acquired a key link along the Sixth Bridges Trail in Towson. The leadership through Athletics Property, our most recent acquisition, featured a turnkey indoor recreation facility that will serve the Lansdowne community and beyond. As indicated previously, the Trade Point Atlantic property acquisition via donation provides a site for an exciting waterfront park that will feature both indoor and outdoor recreation facilities. This project category generally has limited funding as other project categories such as P three-O-One, P three-O-seven, or P three-O-nine are often utilized to increase park and recreation facility accessibility. Only twenty-five thousand is presently allocated to this program for FY twenty twenty-four. Next slide. A significant project being funded out of the P seven fifty-five is the program, is the Point Access Renovation Project at Rocky Point Park. As the photo on the right displays, significant damage has been done to the existing paved point path at the end of the park's peninsula. And you can say that five times real fast. Uh, the proposed renovations and enhancements presently under design include revamping and the construction of boardwalk ramps and observation deck. Funding allowing in addition, picnic pavilion will be constructed where the former Point House was situated. Other potential accessibility enhancement projects may take place at Rosedale Park, Turkey Point Park, and other recreation sites. On behalf of the Department of Recreation and Parks and countless individuals who enjoy the county parks and recreation system, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I will open it up to any questions from board members. Raise your hand or just go ahead and start talking. Uh.
I was wondering where we're at on the golf course, uh, at Rocky Point. Improvements there, is that part of this or is this part of the Revenue Authority?
Yes, sir. The golf course would reside with the Revenue Authority. Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis?
As a former physical education teacher at Hereford High School, I'm concerned about the plans for additional facilities in the Hereford area. Currently, the development of a field in the Sparks area, which is about five miles below Hereford and further away from most of the users, I'm concerned about any indoor facilities that are being planned, excuse me, at this site. There's a great need for additional indoor facilities at the Hereford area or the high school, which could be used for both, uh, education, uh, both the school and for, uh, recreation. And we have a huge need. We have a space next to the high school. Excuse me, and, um, I'm wondering why, uh, they would build any increased facility at the Sparks site when we needed closure to the high school.
And sir, I believe you're referencing the Belfast Road site located adjacent to the existing, I guess what I'll call the new Sparks Elementary.
Correct.
Um. Yeah, I mean, the, the issue with building closer to the, the school site is currently the Department of Recreation and Parks doesn't own any property in that, in that area. Um, it's all B C P S, uh, property, so we had identified the Belfast Road site as a potential way to add both outdoor and indoor recreation amenities into the North County, um, area. Um, we did hold a public, you know, input meeting back in October, November to begin to hear from the public on needs and wants, uh, for those facilities. Um, but as I'm sure I can quote Pat McDougall, who's on this call, if there's additional property in the North County that anyone can identify for us to add additional recreation amenities, that we're always looking for those opportunities.
Well, currently, they're building, uh, additional, uh, senior center there behind the, um, uh, Hereford High School, between Hereford High School and the Hereford itself. And this is a large enough area that, uh, that could be used for recreational uses also. In addition to the area right beside the existing gym on the high school itself.
Uh, and I also know, sir, we're, we're in our conversations with aging. Um, we have had some preliminary conversations about, you know, uh, co-using, uh, their facilities as well. So when they get into the design phase for the new aging center, they're in the heart, kind of in, in Hereford, um, we may have an opportunity there as well.
I strongly support that idea, and I strongly disagree with any additional indoor facilities on the Sparks site because I think it'd be most inconvenient for most of the users up in our area.
Uh, well, sir, I will add that we, we did have significant Recreation Council support for the Belfast Road development, um, as was evidenced at the public input meeting. So from the user Recreation Councils in that area, we, we did receive quite a bit of, of support from them.
Well, the field use, yes, but I doubt if you got that much input on an indoor facility there.
All right, uh, Ms. Brophy?
Thank you, first of all, um, Mr. Schmidt for that presentation. So I'm new to the board, so if this is a general question, I apologize. Um, so gee, does the Department of Parks and Recs, do you guys track attendance and utilization of the parks and amenities? Is that kind of how you prioritize what projects come up and where you look to acquire land?
Um, I, I wish we could track the, the usership at the parks more clearly. Um, because of the number of facilities and kind of the range of where they all are. Um, it is not, you know, possible for us to track every person who comes in and uses, uh, the park facility. What, what we have started to do is utilizing Google metrics to track kind of increase in recreation area usage. So we can, we can use that to see where we're seeing upticks in, in usage and, and I'm, I'm pleased to announce that Baltimore County continues to show some of the largest upticks in use across the system and the state. And we actually led the state during the pandemic with a over two hundred percent increase in park usership. Um, a lot of times we are, we are driven by, you know, facilities we have available as far as we have land available for development in an area that we, that we know, uh, is kind of recreation poor for fields or, or gyms or playgrounds, tennis courts. So a lot of it is, is based upon our, you know, scheduling of what we have going on, input that we receive from the public. Uh, we were, we have staff that are situated in all of the communities and we receive direct input back that way. And then, you know, the budget town hall processes, um, you know, help us determine where's the best locations to begin to move stuff forward. So it's not exact science and, and we're hopeful, we're moving towards some uh, recreation, more electronic recreation management tools that will allow us to, you know, more closely track the usership and can help guide us forward in some of that.
Okay, so kind of the, um, types of recreation, I guess, like, you know, some skate parks, some, you know, ravens playground type things. Those are mostly generated by public input, like we like to see a skate park here because there's a bunch of skaters, you know, just as an example.
And, and with the skate park as an example, um, you know, as we mentioned, there was a, a very historical concrete bowl skate park on the west side. Um, and in meeting with, uh, there's a skateboard council that, that we meet with, um, that kind of represents the skaters throughout Baltimore County, and we were able to identify a site on the east side, so we tried to balance that out. It's not a, a perfect process, just because some cases land isn't available or facilities aren't available. But where we can, we try to look to balance things out and be equitable when we, where we place things.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it.
Certainly.
I don't see any other raised hands. Does anyone else have a question? Mr. McGinnis?
Back again, uh, has the, uh, Parks and Recs even looked into the addition to the existing gym at Hereford that we could be co-used by both recreation and the school?
Uh, we have not had any conversation with the B C P S on adding a second gymnasium at their site. Um, if, if B C P S, we're open to a conversation with them if, if that's something that the school system wants to engage us on. But we have not had any.
The planning board has voted about six years in a row, uh, to look into this and to, uh, expand on that. And we've not gotten any, uh, feedback from the Department of Planning or the Wreckin Parks about this.
Well, I don't know the Department of Recreation and Parks could initiate the school system expanding its facility.
But they could partner with, they already use the facilities there, and they should certainly partner with the school system to increase it, I would think.
Certainly open that conversation with P, with B C P S. We do meet regularly with our capital team, um, and we can have that conversation.
Mr. Schmidt, this was a wonderful presentation. Thank you so very much. You did a great job.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chairwoman, and I'll, this is my first go-round, so, uh, hopefully it was not, uh, too badly done, and I'm.
No, you did, you, you did a good job. Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to thank the capital team from the agency that put this together, so, thank you.
Mr. Luke, if I can ask Mr. Smith the question, Director Smith the question. And it really pertains to B C P S. Uh, you have shared use agreements or joint use agreements. I, I know for facilities, but if facilities are to be built on a B C P S property, that is to be either, has to be in the B C P S budget, I would think, maybe not. Uh, or at least have been approved by their Board of Education. Would that be accurate?
There would be a process, Director Lafferty, and, and I'll have to correct you, it's only Acting Director at this point, sir.
Acting Director Smith, okay.
Uh, but yeah, there would be a process. Um, we do co- co-locate certain amenities, um, where the department has the, the authority to, such as multipurpose courts and playgrounds, ball diamonds at elementary school sites, but certainly for middle and high school sites. Um, there's a, a more formalized process, particularly if it's going to be, um, you know, in, in the, in the case in question where it would be adding a gymnasium to a school athletics, um, program, there would have to be a much more in-depth conversation with B C P S. You know, so it is not as under our control as a, you know, building a facility at a park site.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you again, Mr. Smith. Um.
Certainly.
I think we've taken a, a lot of your time now. Uh, now I'd like to invite Ms. DeBershindo from Property Management to begin her presentation.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the invitation to present tonight. Um, I am the Chief of Property Management, um, and I have the pleasure of working with multiple agencies throughout Baltimore County. Uh, as you heard, um, Acting Director Smith had mentioned, uh, Wreckin Parks is one of the many agencies that we work with. Um, I would like to mention that we work very closely with the libraries, who you will hear from next. Uh, we also then do general, all of general government, which could be, um, any, any of the Department of Aging's, um, capital requests we handle on top of the Health Department, the Corrections, uh, Facility, uh, General Government. Um, I'm trying to think, giving you, but I will go through some examples, but, um, pretty much we are their, their arm to the construction piece, and they are definitely a very, very vital, important part of, um, our process, and we are, they are our customers, and we try to very much closely work with them to give them what they, they and the community wants in their, in their community. So to get started, um, go ahead and to the next slide. So to get started, um, go ahead and to the next slide. Okay, a little bit about property management in general, because not only do we do capital, but we do many other things. We have, um, a building maintenance, a division, a grounds maintenance division, a custodial support service, and of course, the more popular one is our capital projects and enhancement. Next slide. Just a brief overview of our custodial services. We actually clean 148 facilities routinely, uh, which is a total of 5.6 million square feet that are cleaned every day. Next slide. In our building maintenance section, we maintain over 750 primary and auxiliary buildings and structures, including but not limited to, obviously, community rec centers, senior centers, libraries, fire stations, police stations, and other items like conference station, pavilions, um, and any outlying, um, amenities we, uh, support. We have over 6 million square feet of building space to maintain. And last year alone, we had 17,576 work tickets that were actually completed in our, uh, 22 season. Next slide. Grounds Maintenance is another division you're probably very familiar with. Uh, so we help support, um, all facets, including recreation and parks. So we mow over 2,000 acres, um, a week. We have 149 playgrounds that we're responsible for, and each one of them gets, uh, inspected monthly. And if there is any, uh, any things that need to be repaired, we repair them immediately. We have 386 ball diamonds that are groomed, uh, either on a monthly or weekly, uh, rotation during season. We have 26 artificial turf fields and 166 bed maintenance sites. Next slide. How we actually, um, handle our capital and how, what is made and gets selected is always a very good question. So, um, what we do first is we are building maintenance, and we have that maintenance team that actually puts together an infrastructure list of all of the equipment needs, and we try to take into look at the life, uh, cycle of all of our HVAC, electrical, and all of those, um, code requirements that we need to deal with on a daily and yearly basis. Um, and we start making and compiling a very, very long laundry list of all the projects we would like to accomplish in, in a fiscal year. In addition to that, then, we meet with each agency and talk to them about their programming needs. And what they are, needs are in the community and what they find as their priority list. And then together we collaborate with, um, all of the agencies, put together a list, and then we work with O B F, or Office of Budget and Finance. And we create a very long laundry list of, um, what we can accomplish in a fiscal year. Next slide. Things that are taken into criteria that's taken into consideration each year is that we look at our master plan. What was the guidelines or what was the county's mission that we can make sure that we are aligned with the, um, goals that were set forth? We take into consideration, is it, is it smart growth? Is it sustainable? Uh, is it, you know, the time that we're, we're doing a project on the roof, is it time to look at solar? Or any other energy sources, or we're replacing an HVAC, do we go all electric? So we take all of that to help reduce our carbon footprint and looking at that. We take into the consideration the community, um, looking at the health and public safety issues, you know, what issues we're having and how we can enhance that community. Obviously, we always take into consideration the budget. Uh, more importantly, does it make sense to do one project in collaboration with another? So while you have to shut down a facility or while you're already tearing apart an infrastructure of a facility, address another one that may need to be done in five years and combine it so that the impact is less and it's financially beneficial for the county. Operational, what is a federal and state mandate? Uh, was anything required that changed by code that we have to bring up to code if we can? And then, again, timing kind of goes back to that theory. Uh, we take and we're already doing, you know, this project of a renovation in this facility, do we add this portion, which is the HVAC and add it in there? So they are all taken into consideration. Next slide. Capital projects currently open in the 2000, uh, 2023. So currently we have 366 capital projects that we are working on. So I do want to say some of them are little, maybe they're as little as a sidewalk. And then others are, we're building new buildings or developing site plans for an agency so that they can build a new park, build a new building, uh, put a new athletic turf field in, or we're repairing somewhat, you know, a park sidewalk or a fire station's, um, parking lot. 39% of our work orders are actually generated from property management, meaning that there are work that we're trying to, uh, systemically, uh, infrastructurally trying to replace. And then 61% of our work orders are really customer or constituent generated. This is what the community wants us to work on. Next slide. The type of, uh, completed capital projects so far this year is, uh, fiscal year 23 is 256. Uh, we tried to give a breakdown because when you think of capital, you think, oh, we're only building, but we do a lot of things. We might be internally moving, um, agencies from one location to another, or we have to renovate space in a facility. We may be in the design and study phase. We might be looking, um, to, we, there's a conceptual idea that we want to do, and we do some of those before we even go to full-blown design. 109 of our projects are just routine or repairs. Um, that's okay. And then another hundred are, uh, renovation and equipment installation, systemic renovations, upgrades, uh, to equipment. And then what we call new construction is 22, or demolition, meaning we're building new buildings for folks. Next. This is a, a slide to kind of show you where, um, our historical capital budget expenditures have been, uh, since FY 2019. Uh, this is only for 1036. So remember, capital budget can be, uh, money that's actually wrecked, is set aside for them, so that is not captured in here. This is for, um, general government buildings only. So libraries have their own, as you're going to hear, and, and rec does, but this is, everybody else falls in this catchment. And so for FY 23, we have 23,435,000 that we actually have allocated and budgeted for expenditures, uh, in our capital budget. Next slide. FY Projects Update. So we wanted to give you a little bit what we presented last year, what we were working on, uh, and kind of give you an update of where we are today. Um, so this picture is a beautiful picture of, um, a conceptual that we have in, um, Kernwood and Park, Parkton landfill solar fields. Uh, this is where we took brown fields and we would like to, uh, install solar. Uh, this is a picture of Parkton. It's 90% um, concept is, the concept design, and that you will soon be seeing the, um, sign that says construction will begin very shortly. Randalls Town Community Center, uh, we are doing a solar installation, and that's going to be beginning the summer of 23. The Circuit Court Building, as many of you probably know it, it's a very large facility. Um, it, we're doing a systemic HVAC study. Um, for those who don't know, that building was built in, in different layers. Um, so there is a whole bunch of HVAC equipment that's completely different on each floor, uh, and it's very inequated. So we're doing a study to see, uh, what is their recommendation on how we can bring that, uh, very large and heavily used building, uh, into the modern century and have a better, better energy efficient building. And then Wilkins Police Station, we are currently, uh, in design. Um, we are building back on site where the Wilkins Police Station is currently located. Uh, and that design will be finished November of, um, 23. Next slide. Some other projects are, um, we have completed the Detention Center Bowler Replacement. And we are currently working on the, uh, parking lot expansions at the Seven Oaks Senior Center and Fleming Senior Center, both which will begin March of 23. Next slide. One of the other projects that we've been working on is the Lake Roland Pump House Repairs. Uh, we had some systemic, um, stability we needed to do to the pump house so that, um, we can make sure it stays there for a very long time. Uh, so we worked with the Maryland Historic Trust to make sure that we could meet their needs and, and get that building stabilized. Uh, and Woodlawn Senior Center, for those who have been asking for many years, uh, construction, uh, has started, and we hope to be completed August of 23, and that was the expansion for, uh, the senior center, as you can see in this diagram. Next slide. Some FY 24, uh, capital projects. We are doing a complete countywide facilities condition assessment. Uh, we are taking the, the 161 very large buildings we have here in the county, and we've hired a consultant to help do a full assessment of each building. And we, uh, expect that to be completed in FY 24. What that will do for the county is it will help us have a, a true document and a map to help us create a very strong capital program, uh, throughout Baltimore County. So that is gonna, we're very much looking forward to that as another tool in our tool belt to help with our capital planning. Woodlawn Police, uh, Precinct, we had a roof replacement there. Uh, the design is in replace, uh, is in progress now, and construction will start, uh, in, in FY 24. Next slide. The Banneker Museum, um, we have a roof repair and a facade replacement. Uh, this was a very interesting, um, find for us. We, having water intrusion come in, and Wreck and Parks worked very hard with us to, uh, try to determine where the water was leaking. And interestingly enough, uh, we found it was from this facade, and so this facility is, uh, not being used right now, and we are currently, uh, fast-tracking this so that we can get the design done and get it under construction of summer of 23, uh, so that we can get that building back up and running. Cockeysville Senior Centers Parking Lot Expansion, uh, the construction will start in September of 23. Next slide. Some other projects, the Edgemere Senior Center HVAC Replacement will begin, uh, the summer of 24, and the Fullerton Fire Station renovation, uh, that pro, is in progress. We're adding, uh, complete renovation of the, uh, women's and men's locker room and, uh, washer and dryer extractors. And that construction should begin FY of 24. Next slide. You will be very happy, um, Mr. Wayne, to know that, uh, the Hereford Senior Center, uh, is currently, um, in progress with design. Uh, we are working very closely with both, um, Aging and, um, the Rec, uh, excuse me, Wreck and Parks to talk about this site and not only have it as a senior center, but how it could be more used as a community center after hours. So, um, this is a very engaging opportunity for us. We have bought the property next to the Royal Farms there on Mount Carmel. I pass it every day going home from work, so I'm, I'm constantly looking at it. Um, but we will keep you, uh, very much updated, but we're very excited about that opportunity. Lock Raven, uh, the Lock Raven Center, many of you may know, on Ken, uh, Key, Glen Keith, um, road. There is a feasibility, uh, study being done for a renovation and a possible addition to this facility. Um, that's currently under study. And the Randalls Town Fire Station, the mechanical upgrade, design and construction will begin in FY 24. Next slide. I hope that you can see, quite frankly, that we are very busy here in Baltimore County. Um, and it is property management's honor to work very closely, not only with this board, but the communities and our agencies to help support everyone in Baltimore County to make a great facility. And I can take any questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Schindel. Um, I'll let, again, people want to raise their hands. I'm going to ask a first question. The assessment, the facilities assessment, has that ever been done before?
No, sir, not in Baltimore County. Uh, this will be the first time that these buildings were assessed, so it's exciting.
Well, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, I, I was, I just wanted to first thank you for the Woodlawn Senior Center, uh, that's been a project that's been on people's mind for a very long time. So first, just want to thank you for that. And then, um, I asked a little bit about how the county is going to utilize some of the buildings in Towson. You know, is there plans, since the office space is not being utilized, and is there a plan to look at, want to back to work, but if not, how they would utilize that, those offices in that space?
So I'm not sure specifically what office you're talking about, because quite frankly, um, we are using every inch of Towson space that we have right now and busting at the seams. Um, but the county does, and, and I'm a huge advocate for this, we do, uh, have teleworking that is in place, and the county, um, and, and I have been part of that conversation, is we are starting to look at, uh, following the national trends to kind of go into a more hoteling model, if possible. Um, and so that obviously would have to be further discussion with each agency, but we are, uh, looking at the possibility of, um, having hoteling space for individuals so that we can reduce our carbon footprint. But at this time, I, uh, very frank, we use every inch plus some that, uh, is needed for, for county services.
Mr. McGinnis?
Um, I wanted to remind the, uh, speakers that, in the past in Northern Baltimore County, the only recreation facilities have been in collaboration with the high school, with the schools, elementary and high schools. So this has always been a fact that, uh, there was use of these facilities. And I would urge you to, um, do further study on the use of the, of the Hereford High School, uh, in addition to the, uh, Recreation, the Senior Center area. Thank you.
Ms. Wolfson? Can't hear you.
Another great presentation, Deborah. Um, I'm, I'm wondering, um, with, um, the Randalls Town Senior Center, um, if there, if the solar dedicated to that space will be on the roof? And also if there's planning going on when they're replacing roofs throughout the county, if they will be installing solar in those roofs?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so Randalls Town is a solar roof project. Um, we do take a very good look at, um, when we go to replace roofs, there is an open discussion, um, for some of our facilities, and I will give you a perfect example. I actually am stationed at Glen Arm. We did originally when we got, went to go look at that roof replacement needed, uh, we started down the road to do a, a quick feasibility to see if we could put solar on it. Uh, it's, infrastructure would not support a solar system, but we do make that as part of our discussion, um, as we go forth on, on many of these projects. So yes, ma'am, we do.
So, but I see in the rendering for the, for the Woodlawn Senior Center, you know, that's, a lot of that's new, isn't it? And, and there's no solar dedicated to that?
Actually, there will be solar in that rendering. Uh, it did not, um, reflect that at the time in the drawings that we had, but there will be solar, uh, on the rooftop and E V charging stations there at that location.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Deborah, thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time to do this. Now, I remember the Banneker Museum opened not too long ago, so is the contractor responsible for the problems that you're having over there? Or no, it's out of warranty right now?
So, actually, it's been over many years, 10 years or more?
Oh, please.
Yes, ma'am. I know. Um, so I'm sorry. Uh, time flies, uh, and so there is no warranty. Um, usually contract, uh, construction warranties are usually two years after, uh, you take possession of the building legally. Um, so no, ma'am, it's been over 10 years. Um, so no, you're right.
I remember being at the ribbon cutting. Didn't seem like that long ago.
Well, that's because you're a baby, and we know. Well, that's because you're a baby and we know, you're getting strolled in. That's what I'm gonna give you, Ms. Nancy.
The parking facility, solar facility, where would that energy go to? How will that be used by the county?
I, I will have to defer to, because I'm only part of, I construct, I don't deal with them. But it does go back on the grid. But I will toss that ball to Matt Carpenter, who's with OBF.
Yes, that's a part of, would be part of a PPP, I'm sorry, a power purchase agreement that county is working to be used to land for what's called waterfall against existing county usage. And we go back in the grid general use, but we would use it as a sense to offset county our productions and our buildings and so forth of that nature.
Seeing no further questions. Once again, thank you, Ms. Schindel. Always fascinating to hear about all of the county buildings and what's going on there. We'd now like to invite Mr. James Cook from the Baltimore County Public Library to make his presentation.
Very much, and good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here on behalf of our director, Sonia Alcantara Antoine, who could not make it this evening. So thank you for allowing me to fill in. And thank you to Deb Schindel and her team for all they are doing to help us create Twenty-First Century Libraries across Baltimore County. And for allowing me a few minutes of her time to talk specifically about library projects coming up. Next slide, please. We've been coming before the planning board for many years. And as you know, many of you know, we have nineteen facilities across the county, ranging in age from eleven years old to the Reisterstown branch, a part of which is from the eighteen twenties. So they present a number of challenges and opportunities for the building program. Many of our buildings were actually built in the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies. So as you can imagine, in twenty-twenty-three, they are, we are finding many challenges in the design of old buildings and how to retrofit them toward, for modern library usage. So it's quite an interesting challenge for all of us. Our buildings range in size from very small twenty-five hundred square feet at our Lock Raven Library to a large ninety-three thousand square feet in our Towson Library and Administrative Offices Building. And all of those library branches, whether they are small or large, are full-service libraries, providing the full array of services to the citizens of Baltimore County. Next slide. It's very exciting to work on library buildings right now, in large part due to the support of the county executive, the county government, the Office of Budget and Finance, and Deb Schindel and her team, because we are all on the same page as regards library building philosophies. We want to create library buildings throughout the county that meet the Twenty-First Century needs of our residents, of our communities, that are gracious, welcoming, exciting spaces to be in, that are, that are buildings that are in fact viewed as a point of pride in our communities and neighborhoods. Buildings that are flexible and adaptable to the many uses that our customers come to the public library for in twenty-twenty-three. Libraries are no longer just about checking out books or studying. They are social spaces. We have meeting rooms, we have study rooms, we have many, many uses of the library that go far beyond the traditional library experience. Next slide. Last year when we were here, we shared with you a video, which I'm just sharing the link again. I won't take the time to show it as it's rather long. But it's a video that highlights some of the Twenty-First Century libraries that we are particularly interested in, including in our area, the Michael Bush Library in Annapolis, which is a model of a modern Twenty-First Century library space. And the Exploration Commons in the Carroll County Public Library Westminster Branch, which is a great example of flexible maker space and what can be done with that. In all of our Twenty-First Century libraries, we want to create spaces that are for learning, for play, for exploration, for discovery, that will support both quiet activities and noisy activities. And if you've been in any of our libraries these days, you know that they are not necessarily quiet. But we try to create spaces for those who want quiet and for those who want social interaction. Our libraries are now centers for community expression. We have art exhibits in our libraries. We serve meat, we serve food in our libraries to teens and children who may not be getting, may not have access to food at home. We are using our libraries for a variety of after-school programs. We do things like passport acceptance in our libraries. And we create workspaces for a variety of library users. Next slide. In addition, and in alignment with Baltimore County and Baltimore County Property Management, in all of our major renovations and projects now, libraries are striving to, to align and be green. All of our major renovations moving forward will be lead silver minimum. We have electric vehicle charging stations currently in seven of our, at seven of our libraries. We're working on the eighth right now. So we're very excited about that. And we're dedicated to using modern and energy-efficient systems in alignment with property management's directive and goals. And we're also, for our own purposes, we are looking at things like natural recycled and PVC-free materials when we look at our furnishings for libraries and our various surfaces. We're also looking at the exterior spaces and looking toward pollinator gardens, green spaces, and all kinds of plantings which help to create sustainable libraries throughout the county. Next slide. Our most recent completed major capital project was the renovation of the Reisterstown Library. And we had a ribbon cutting there on September fourteenth of twenty-twenty-one, and you may remember. This was a major project, a three-point-eight million dollar renovation. Part of the building was historic, dating to the eighteen twenties and required historic restoration. I just gotta have a few pictures from the renovation to show you the transformed space. Next slide, please. We continue to this day to get compliments every single day from customers who discover the Reisterstown Library and are amazed at the transformation that we were able to make, working with property management and our architects, to transform what was a dark, very crowded, rather old-fashioned-looking space into a modern Twenty-First Century space that's light and airy, that has work, workspaces and places for people of all ages to engage in activities from studying to looking for materials, to looking, working on their genealogy or family history in our preservation station, from using the Reisterstown History Room, or to bringing their children in for storytime. So we're so proud of that library and it is, is a model for the kinds of renovations and new buildings we like to do moving forward. Next slide. We've made some other major capital improvements in FY twenty-two and twenty-three, and I just want to highlight a few of those. One was our White Marsh branch, where we have completely re-shelled the branch, which may seem like a small thing, but shelving is a big deal in public libraries. And many of our branches had very old-style shelving that was very tall, very wide, took up a lot of floor space, cut down on light and created sort of a dark, impenetrable feeling in the building. White Marsh, and that's the picture at the top, we were able to take out all the old shelving and replace it with our new standard for shelving, which is lower, thinner, takes up much less floor space, opens the spaces up for customer use, for collaboration, for work, for study, and also creates improved sightlines and improved lighting throughout the building. We're very proud of that project. In addition, we, we've updated the lobby to the Reister's, excuse me, the Randalls Town Meeting Room. The, the meeting room was part of a renovation of that branch that was done several years ago. But due to funding limitations, we weren't able to address the lobby. So we were finally able to redo the lobby to bring it up to the style and, and character of the rest of the branch. So we're very excited about that. And one of our biggest achievements this past year was the replacement of the Pikesville Library parking lot, which was, was in much need and had been asked about and requested by citizens for quite, quite a long time. And has been met with great satisfaction by the Pikesville customers. We were able to completely replace the lot, re-stripe it, repay it, and make it into a much safer and accessible parking for that, for the Reister's, for the Pikesville community. And that building is shared by the library and the senior center, so they are both benefiting from this new lot. Next slide, please. Our current major capital project that I just want to highlight, and again, we talked about this last year, is the renovation of our Catons, Catonsville branch. This is a project that's been several years in the making, and we're excited to see it happening. We're, we're expecting to begin construction in March of this year. And it's going to be a twelve-month construction project. So we're really looking forward to getting this seven-point-nine million dollar renovation launched. This will be a complete renovation of the interior, so we will essentially be gutting the interior and completely rethinking it to bring it up to Twenty-First Century library standards. The renovation will include audio/video recording studios in the lower level of the library. And this will be a first for BCPL. These will be our first recording studios for the system. And we'll align with the, the music theme of the Catonsville area. So we're very excited to get this, this project going. Next slide. Some other capital projects that we're currently working on with property management and the Office of Budget and Finance, the Woodlawn Library. We are currently engaged in community engagement around the renovation and expansion of that library. We're going to be meeting with community leaders, community members, our staff, our customers, to talk about what they want in the new Woodlawn Library. We're going to be moving then into design for that renovation and expansion and hopefully into construction in the summer of twenty-four, we hope. This is going to be a really exciting project for the Woodlawn community, and we're very excited to be gaining additional space and having an opportunity to rethink the Woodlawn Library for the Woodlawn community residents. In addition, we are in, we're just beginning our design for the White Marsh Library renovation of the meeting room and restrooms. This is a project we've been wanting to do for several years, and happily, we are able to move forward with that now. We are also working on renovations of the public and staff restrooms at Pikesville. As I said, the Pikesville building is shared by the library and the senior center upstairs, and so the public restrooms are heavily used. And we are looking forward to really updating those and modernizing them. We're also looking at HVAC upgrades for our North Point Library, so that is also a project that's in design. And we've been working on some feasibility studies for the possibility of renovation or replacement of our Essex and Towson libraries. Next slide. Just a point to consider, an average library, and by that I mean a library of about twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet. These days, an average library interior renovation costs between eight and ten million dollars. For the same-sized library, a new library building on average now costs between thirty and fifty million dollars. So it is, these are important, important projects, but they are expensive. Next slide. And I just for comparison, we are very grateful to the county executive, the county government, the Office of Budget and Finance for the, for the capital funding that supports library projects. And we are very happy to see that, that number growing as the years go, go on. But just for comparison, we wanted to share some information from, from our neighboring library systems about their capital budgets. Boy, I would certainly love to have Prince George's County's capital budget. But we are very grateful for the money we are receiving from the county government to support Twenty-First Century libraries. Next slide. And finally, I just want to highlight some of our capital improvement needs moving forward for the next five years. As I mentioned, we are currently in community engagement and then, and will be in design for the Woodlawn Library renovation and expansion. And we're very grateful to the county for their support in, to the amount of thirteen million dollars to get that project moving forward. This is the most money that BCPL has ever had dedicated to a single library renovation. So we're so excited for the possibilities that this, this opens up. Other libraries that we're looking to improve in the future, interestingly enough, Essex, Lansdowne and Towson all have the same problem. They're vastly different in sizes and usage, but they all have basically the same challenges, which are that they are, they have insufficient space now for the uses that we need, need them to fulfill. They are aging and their systems are giving us some challenges. And also, we are looking for libraries that will most, better meet the needs of those communities. So we're really excited to, to think about moving those projects forward in the future. And I might also note that those three projects, Essex, Lansdowne and Towson, were supported by some comments from the community that were submitted to the planning board this session. So we're very excited to be moving forward with some, some thinking and idea, idea creation around those, around those library buildings and spaces. And I think that's the end of the presentation. We thank you again for your advocacy and support of libraries as you have done for many years, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. As before, raise your hand, virtually raise your hand. Any questions, comments, or we've built out for now. Actually, one thing, you, you showed the slide comparing the, the capital budget for some of the surrounding counties. What again is the budget for Baltimore County?
We get, we get a one-point-nine-five million allotment every other year, plus money from the ten thirty-six, which supports other projects. So depending on the year, I think, and on average, we, we are looking at about eight to ten million dollars that support library projects. I'll kind of look to Matt and Deb to tell me if I'm off base there, but I believe that's about right.
Yes, sir, I think you're about right.
Yep.
I just didn't see it live for comparison purposes.
So while we appreciate all that, that, those, that funding, library projects do become very expensive, very quick.
Yes, Mr. Cook, thank you for your presentation. I happen to live in the Essex area, and I'm just curious. I thought you said that the property was outgrowing and they needed a upgrade. What is the procedure that you look at to choose a new location for a library site?
We work with property management very carefully and very thoroughly to look at possible sites for a new building. The challenge with our Essex Library is that it is in a shopping center, so it is not an ideal location for accessibility. So we are, we are thinking about the possibility of other properties in the Essex area. So really, we, we submit our, our needs and our goals for the library, for the new Essex Library, for example, to property management, and we work together to look at possible locations for potential new building. Deb, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure. So we also, as property management, work with, with a realtor. And we also work with the community and, and some other resources to determine if there's any property that is available. We also look at property we already own in the community. I can't really disclose right now in the Essex community, because we are looking at some property. But we do, we take any and every piece of information, if somebody knows that there's a property that may be for sale or someone wants to sell, please feel free to share it with the library. But we do, we, we run down those leads, internal leads, community leads, and we use a realtor. So that's what we're in the process of doing, is really trying to determine where we would like to put this, and is there any land available?
In your deliberation, do you consider the transit? Because a lot of people in the area do use the transit.
Yes, and I don't want to speak for James. What we do is we work very closely with the, the branch and the administration of the library, so they communicate the needs, because we do understand that transit is very important in communities. And so, yes, we are looking at that particularly for that location.
Absolutely. We're, we're always looking at bus lines, walkability, access to area schools. So we're always considering those things when we look at potential library sites. Thank you.
Other questions from anyone? I am not seeing anything, so if there are no further questions, thank you again, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments or questions, we will adjourn. I do want to note for the record that several other board members have joined us since we did the roll call. Ms. German, Mr. Johnson, Mr. McGinnis, Ms. Pinaro. I think I've got everyone who's, who's joined. The next capital improvements meeting will be this Thursday, January twenty-sixth at five-thirty. This meeting will also be held virtually. Information for that meeting can be found on the planning board's webpage. Again, thank you all for attending, and this meeting is hereby adjourned, and I'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.